Good evening and welcome. We'll bring to order the regular planning commission meeting of Wednesday, October 19th, Let's start with the city clerk, confirmation of posting and roll call, please.
Thank you. The agenda was posted in accordance with open meeting law. Member Loreen Crum is absent and the remainder of the members are present.
Thank you very much. Would each of you stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. And that moves us to our initial public comment period. Comments during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters that are found on the agenda for action. Each person would have up to five minutes to speak. And I would note that each of the items on our agenda tonight are public hearings, so you will have an opportunity to speak during that agenda item. And often that's a nice way to go in that you can hear the staff report prior to your comments. But if anyone would like to be heard on anything on the agenda, please stand and approach the podium. And seeing none at this moment. Whoop. Would you like to make a comment?
Yes, I wish to speak pertaining to the zoning change.
Please do. Please come up to the podium.
Please.
Yes, ma'am. There is a sign-in sheet up there. If you would please print your name, we'd appreciate that.
Hello, this is on? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to thank you very much for all of your service and wanted to also have my thoughts known on what is transpiring on the zoning change on the property on Nevada Way where there is a possibility of a fire station being built.
Ma'am, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but can you please state your name for the record?
Oh, yes. My name is Terry Mann. The sign that you posted on the property about two weeks ago, it has been removed. Just thought I'd let you guys know that. So there may have been more people, but they're not necessarily aware that what's transpiring. I currently live in Tuscany Retreat, which is literally the residential area that abides right next to where the proposed fire station would be. Purchased my property five years ago and have been going back and forth and now retired and I'm up here full-time. So this is quite surprising to me that this would occur and that there would be a zoning requirement or a change to have a fire station put in a residential area. Obviously, that is not going to be something that's going to assist in property values or quiet enjoyment when you're talking about having sirens going back and forth. And it is literally right next to a residential area. The environmental issues as well, that the Rams are always there, the Roadrunners are always there. We go right up there, we hike. I mean, it is a beautiful area, which is one of the reasons that we purchased this property. Doing a little bit of research, there is other parcels that are in the city of Boulder City that could be utilized on this side of the hill because I understand that you definitely want to be able to use the FEMA funds, the federal funds, but does it necessarily have to be a zoning change and put a fire station in a residential area? So that's, you know, not great. So anyhow, also, having been in my, my full-time profession is real estate for 35 years, that is not going to assist in our property values, which is one of the reasons that we moved up here. So that is something that is extremely important to us and not to mention the noise and the quiet enjoyment. And I guess the bottom line here, I'd just like to ask you, each one of you, would you like to have a fire station next to your house? So that's really the bottom line and that there are multiple parcels that could be utilized here in Boulder City on this side of the hill, not necessarily that parcel. That may be the more reasonable parcel to develop, which understanding of city funds, but is that the best parcel at this particular time for, like I say, quiet enjoyment, for the environment and for property values and changing it from a residential zoning? So thank you very much.
Please step up, state your name, and please print your name on the sign-in sheet.
Yes, my name is Mike Pontius. I live in Tuscany Retreat, which is just across the street from the proposed fire station. And I'm here to comment on a few things that I don't quite understand about it. I've been out of town a little bit, and so I just got this notice when I got back and I was a little bit shocked. I drove from the existing fire station down to where the new proposed one is, and it's about 3.2 miles, oh, excuse me, 1.9 miles, about three and a half minutes is what it took me. And I stopped at the stoplight. So I assume one of the drivers for this fire station is the Lakeview where we see a number of fire trucks and EMTs come down Boulder Highway or down 93. And you can hear the sirens and everything. But it seems, you know, from the proposed fire station to Lakeside, if that's your number one focus on getting EMTs there, you're talking about maybe a net of two, two and a half minutes. And for the millions of dollars this is going to cost in double equipment and double personnel and legacy costs and cleaning the building, it just seems ridiculous for that short amount of time. I know we have government funds and we had a great meeting on what to do with them, but it seems like there's a lot better opportunities to spend that money than this. I also look at the impacts for me, which is obviously the noise. My property abuts quartzite within the Tuscany Retreat track. We hear enough sirens and noise all day long without having a new source right across the street. And when you look at the impacts of where this thing is located, going north down the hill toward Highway 93 at the quartzite, there's a, there's a turn lane there. That turn lane will certainly be impacted. Quartzite itself, a two-lane street, something's gonna have to be done there if there's gonna be emergency traffic flowing in and out of there. And there's probably also gonna have to be some kind of an emergency street light or stoplight on Nevada Way or quartzite if, if there's an emergency. The fire truck or the MT is not gonna necessarily wanna stay and stop at the stop sign. So I think there's an awful lot of things that need to be looked at and a lot of properties that may be better off. But just alone, this, this two-minute difference or two, two and a half minute difference seems ridiculous for a town this size to have to have two fire stations in that close together. I mean, I don't know what the ratio of, of fire stations to people that live in towns, but I'm certainly that two stations in a town like Boulder City of 16,000 people far surpasses the, the ratio in Henderson or Vegas. So I hope the commission would take a second look at that and, and look at the property and see some of the impacts it's gonna be. The Tuscany Retreat subdivision, 47 homes, really has one access point, and that's almost directly across from the east corner of this proposed site. I certainly object to it. I think it's money not well-spent, and I think there's gonna be a lot of impacts on the people that live in the vicinity and the people that may live in the vicinity later because there's, are one property zoned on at least two sides of this. If you need a second property and if EMT access to places like Lakeview is a priority, there's a lot of places down by Lakeview that are even closer that's in more of a commercial area. So I would certainly hope you would give it a second thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Booth.
I'll sign in here. I also live in Tuscany Retreat, but my question is not so much about the zoning, I mean, about the location of the firehouse, but, well, it is really, and sorry, let me start over. I think the firehouse needs to go up on the industrial area of Boulder City. There's a couple of reasons for it because my office is at 1610 Boulder City Parkway, right next to Subway. And the fire department is now, since they opened up I-11, we're seeing more traffic from the fire department going down to Railroad Pass, that area, hopping on I-11 and taking care of the accidents that happened down in that area. It seems to me that there's gonna be a terrible accident with them scooting down the, in front of my office as fast as they're going because I know they're all going over 45, 50 at a time, and somebody's gonna pull out in front of them and there's gonna be a major accident. If you put something up on industrial, they could go down, veterans and hop on the expressway a little bit better that way and not have so much traffic they have to deal with and in-town traffic. Because they're actually going into 35 lane to 45 and then into a 50. So I think that we haven't looked at all of our options and why was just one option looked at? And maybe this is the thing, is maybe to send it back and say, let's look at some of the other options and see if possibly it might be safer and, and more help to have it in the industrial area where they could come down onto, well, Boulder City Parkway also down there and go to the convalescent home and into the senior parks where they, most of their runs are going. But yet it would also give them access to veterans and hop on there, like maybe where the animal shelter is in that area. And they still have the access to Lakeside as well as to the freeway. So that's just my thought is that, I don't want it next to my house either. We can all say that. We probably would all feel that way if it was next to your house. But I think really, we really need to look at some of the other options that are out there before we just say, yay, this is where it should be. And I think safety is a big concern, safety for, for our fire department, that somebody's gonna be hurt flying down the road the way they are going because somebody's not gonna pay attention and pull out right in front of them. So I think it's a safety issue also, and I think it should be looked in and why wasn't another site picked? Why aren't we given two sites that we could look at and what would be the better of those sites? Or was this the only one and what was the reason for it? Maybe you've got all that information, but I didn't see where they looked at any other site but that site. Thank you.
Seeing no other commenters at this time, we're gonna move to our virtual audience. If anybody in the virtual audience would like to call in and make a comment at this moment, please dial 702-589-9629. And there's a little bit of a lag in our system, so we'll give it a few moments. Hearing no comments. Let's, let's close this initial public comment period and move to the agenda items for action. The first action is approval of the minutes for the last two meetings we had in August 31st, 2022 special meeting and the September 21st regular meeting. Let's, if anyone has comments, let's take these two together.
If there are no comments, I'd just move for approval of, I guess, both of them if that's the case.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving the minutes, aye. Anyone opposed? Very good. Moving forward to agenda item number two for possible action. This is V-22-661 relating to Duke's Storage Limited at 1573 Foothill Drive. This is a public hearing on an application for a variance in the commercial manufacturing zone to permit an additional building on the property with a total of 17 parking spaces, whereas Section 11 of the city code requires a minimum of 34 spaces for that size of a Susan, do we have a staff report on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicants and owner intend to place a new building on the property, which results in the need for a parking variance. The existing building is quite small for the site. It only occupies less than 5% of the 1.25 acre site, and that building requires six parking spaces. The proposed building will be quite large, almost 28,000 square feet in size, and it is proposed for boat and RV storage, and that would require 28 parking spaces per code. The project is not like most boat storage facilities in that it is not proposed as individual designated outdoor boat storage parking spaces, which would not require a parking variance, nor will it be, will it be enclosed mini storage units, which would only require parking for the management office. Instead, the owners are proposing a single large warehouse building and boats will be stored and retrieved by staff rather than customers for what the applicants are referring to as concierge service similar to valet parking. Based on the single building design, however, parking has to be calculated on warehouse business use. The applicants are basing the justification for the variance request on the unique nature of the proposed business in that it will not involve the same number of employees that a warehousing business would. The staff report analyzes the five criteria that the planning commission must find in favor of in order to grant a variance. There are two recommended conditions. The first is the standard condition that any approval is based on the plans and information presented to you either in the packet or discussed at the meeting tonight, and that deviations would not be permitted beyond the scope of, of the variance you might approve tonight. And secondly, there's a condition that the variance does not apply to any other use other than the boat and RV storage for the new building, and that any change of use on site would require a new variance request, and the applicants are aware of that requirement. There are alternate findings for approval and denial at the end of the staff report, and any motion you might make is summarized on page 23.
Thank you very much. Commission, does anyone have additional questions for Susan? You're getting off easy. I'm assuming you're the applicant?
I'm representing the applicant. My name's Jason Mayhew. Susan's done a great job of explaining what, what we're trying to get at here, and the nature of our business just doesn't need all of those parking spaces. People aren't driving in the warehouse and parking their own boats. They're dropping them off and the staff is putting them in the warehouse and everything. So, and it's by appointment only, so it's not like 10 people are gonna be showing up at the same time trying to park their boats. It's by appointment. So the uniqueness of this business, just having the extra parking spaces, is just not needed. If you have any other further questions, I'm here to answer them for you.
Commission, any questions for the applicant?
I was just gonna say, this is a much-needed use. There's definitely a shortage of RV storage, boat storage, so I think you'll do well.
I agree. Thank you.
I suppose this is more just personal interest question, not really germane, but I'm that way. In a facility that large, about how many, well, now we've got different sized boats, how many?
If I, if I recall, it's around 40.
Oh.
Around 40 spaces in there, and that's packed in pretty tight.
Right, right.
It was somewhere between 35 and 40. I can't remember the exact, but somewhere in that ballpark.
Sure, sure.
I do have a question. When you, based on the logistics of moving the boats in and out, is most of the movement occurring in the building or does it require a lot of outside the building?
The majority is in the building, the maneuvering. The only thing they have to do in the parking lot possibly is just turn it around.
Okay.
That, so, and then they'd hook onto it with a forklift, kind of, and be able to maneuver it much easier with a forklift or a small piece of equipment like that.
So I'm looking at the drawing. My apologies, I do have a question. Looking at the drawing, and as you mentioned, if I am understanding the layout properly, it looks fairly tight in there. Do you expect folks to kind of wheel their boat in and kind of back it towards the door of the warehouse or?
There's about 65 feet from building to building.
Ah, okay.
So, I mean, it's bigger than it looks, but the logistics of how they, if the, if they're picking them up, dropping them on the street and then pulling them in with the forklift or driving them in and dropping them, I don't know the answer to that one, but whichever way is gonna be the easiest for them to get in.
So there are options, it sounds like.
I believe so, yes.
Okay, very good.
It's gonna depend on the length, too.
True, true. Very good.
The length will definitely depend on how they maneuver them in the, in the yard.
Right, right. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. You guys all have a great night. Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anyone who would like to be heard on this matter, please step forward to the podium. Seeing none, let's open it up to the virtual audience again. If anyone out there has comments, please call 702-589-9629. Hearing no comments, let's close this public comment period, and we'll bring it back to the planning commission. Any comments, thoughts, or motions?
Mr. Chairman, I will try and make that motion to, I don't have it in front of me. Right?
Find your group notes.
I'm conditionally approve V-22-661, subject to the findings and conditions contained on page three of the staff report.
We have a motion. We have a second.
I'll second that.
Can we have a discussion first?
Well, we, actually, we can have a motion and then a discussion. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on behalf of the planning commission? Mr. Bioski?
Yes. Probably the one thing that would be of some concern that we should be considering is the drop-off issue. While I can, I believe from what the applicant said, most of the drop-off would typically be in the, on the property, but there is also still the potential, depending on the traffic, for on-street, need for on-street parking, temporarily albeit. And from what I've seen driving by that area, there is pretty heavy usage of the existing available parking. I'm not saying it's a bad thing, but I do believe it is a consideration that we have to, we have to make. Beyond that, I think it's a great project. I mean, I, definitely, there's a lot of need for covered and protected storage for boats because I know people trying to find it every day and you can't find it. So I support it, but I, I am concerned about that.
If I could just make a quick comment to that one?
Are we, may we call the applicant back up?
That's at the chair's discretion to call the applicant back up to answer any questions you might have.
Very good. Would the applicant please step forward and make some?
To answer your question, we believe that the only reason that that would happen is if somebody's towing a 45-foot boat with a 40-foot motorhome. In those type of situations where there's no maneuverability, that might happen. The majority of the drop-off will be on-site, but in a case where we have a 45-foot Prevost towing a 40-foot boat, it's just not possible to drive that into the lot to drop it off. So that's where I'm saying, if there was, it's a limited situation and due to just sheer length.
I wouldn't think they'd be picking up a boat and putting it in the water with a 45-foot Prevost, though.
You'd be surprised what people do. That's why I just threw that out there. I mean, if somebody comes in with too long of a vehicle, then that would, that would be, possibly be the case.
I see. So in, in reality, you anticipate that?
Most people are gonna pull right in, unhook, and then you turn back around and drive out.
I see, I see. And then you'll maneuver the boat?
Correct.
Around that lot area with, with a smaller vehicle?
Correct, correct.
Okay, okay. Does that kinda make you feel more comfortable?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments before we bring this to a vote? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It passes. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. You guys all have a great night.
Thank you, you too. That brings us to item number three for possible action. This is Kevin Thistle for Darren and Donna Saunders at 804 Nevada Way, and this is matters pertaining to property in the general commercial zone. And we'll have a public hearing. We'll also have resolution number 1221, a conditional use permit for an application for a outdoor food vendor, and then a, we'll also look at a parking variance. We're gonna start with a staff report on this issue. And Susan, do we have some information to share?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna summarize both requests together. For this particular request, the approval of the conditional use permit is dependent on approval of the variance for parking. is dependent on approval of the variance for parking. So, the commission should keep that in mind as you consider the approval of the conditional use permit. This property at 804 Nevada Way consists of an older, long-closed, apparently, one-story motel, which will be converted to retail suites. And that's obviously permitted in our C2 commercial zone. The aspect which requires a conditional use permit is the request for outdoor sales display specifically for a proposed food vendor business, which they're proposing as a sandwich shop. And that will occur in a stationary trailer or potentially a mobile food truck to be located at the front of the site. For the food truck, the presumption is that the food business operation could operate year-round, although this would not necessarily be a requirement. And given this approach, the resolution for the conditional use permit notes the intent is that the space could be occupied by different potential businesses over time, not necessarily the same truck. Or the proposal, as you see in their plans, was for an airstream trailer. In theory, there might be different businesses over time that that trailer might be leased to. And lastly, oh, as mentioned, the approval of this conditional use permit for the food vendor trailer is dependent on approval of the variance request. Now, for this property, there's only one variance that is necessary, and that is relative to parking. If the proposed plans were just to remodel the motel suites into retail, no parking variance would be needed. Technically, the conversion requires a slight increase in parking, but the code allows for an administrative variance of up to 10%, and that would solve that problem. So, in this case, the only reason the parking variance is needed is due to the outdoor customer seats for the food truck. Since a food truck is inherently typically a vehicle, even if this one might be a stationary trailer, we don't require parking for that use itself. But for all dining-related uses, the Boulder City zoning ordinance requires parking based on customer seats, one space for every two customer seats. And in this case, since a variance is required, we can't apply that 10% administrative standard. So, that, the seating bumps the parking requirement to 18 spaces per code. The applicant states that the pertinent issue relative to the need for the parking variance is related to the configuration of the existing building, which limits where parking can be provided. They also note that the variance is necessary, in their opinion, to be able to compete with downtown central business districts, excuse me, district businesses, which are not required to have parking on-site. For this particular area along Nevada Way, which happens to be outside of our designated downtown area where all the public parking lots are available, there have been several variances over the years that have been granted to dining-related uses on this particular stretch of Nevada Way. And your staff report contains backup with regard to that. For a variance, there are five criteria that must be satisfied in order for it to be approved. And so, for this particular request, only one condition is suggested, and it's the standard condition that any approval you make tonight is based on the information before you, including anything that may be discussed at the meeting tonight. So, you are welcome to hold a public hearing on both requests together, and then consider approval of the resolution for the conditional use permit and the variance criteria. Findings, or rather, for either approval or denial are on pages, excuse me, the finding, your finding choices are on page, motion choices are on page 46 of the report. Actually, 36 and 46. Page 36 for your motion to make regarding the conditional use permit, and page 46 for your motion language for a variance.
Thank you, Susan. Does anyone on the commission have any questions for city staff?
One question I do have has to do with on-street parking. I went by there today, and it looked to me like on-street parking in that immediate area of that building was not allowed, unless I'm wrong. Is that true? There is, or there isn't?
On Nevada Way, I don't believe that particular stretch allows parking on either side of the street.
Okay, that's kinda?
It varies. I know that a little further to the east, for instance, I believe, east of the motel, when you get over to Southwest Diner, at that point, there is parking on one or both sides. But in this particular stretch, I don't believe there is.
Okay.
Now, one aspect which is actually brought up more so relative to the next request on the agenda for the property across the street, which the applicant also owns, is that the owner has brought up the possibility of having cross-parking for those two uses.
And of course, actually, my question relates even more so to the next project. But that does answer my question, because it does mean that there is a very limited availability of on-street parking. I would, at least that's what I'm hearing, so, but thank you.
I have a question.
Very good, Ms. Bonner.
Thank you. Is the parking lot across the street next to the other property, is that public parking, or is that a private parking lot for that plaza? Where the mortuary is? Because that parking lot is frequently?
So, I'm sorry, you're asking about, oh, you mean?
Directly next to?
To the west where the nest is?
No, across the street where the mortuary is.
Across the street where the office complex is, that's private parking.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Yeah.
Very good. Susan, could you, you know, I have concerns, I think like many of us do about parking for both of these projects. This one, pretty minor issue, certainly. But could you kind of help flesh out the, kind of the parking allowances or limitations, if you will, on some of the substandard streets that are on, that go northward? I'm talking about Elm Street. I think it's Date Street is on the other side of this property. And then we have, I think, Cherry Street, a little further, further to the east. Are they basically open parking as long as it's not red-curbed?
That's correct, although my recollection is that Elm and First Street, I believe Elm only allows parking on one side. Sorry, I didn't survey that. But yes, if it's not red-curbed, parking is allowed on public streets. But as Mr. Biasey pointed out, in that particular area along Nevada Way, it's not there. But on the side streets, it would be allowed if it's not painted red, or without, if it's not signed as no parking on that side of the street.
Right. And obviously, the residents would typically tend to use that as well. So, this would certainly impact that. All right, thank you. Any other questions of staff? Mr. Biasey?
Actually, one more came to mind. I should ask it earlier. But where the food truck would go, would it, will there be an available sewer and water to that site?
It will be required in terms of, I believe, having a grease trap put in for that use, and electrical service.
Oh, okay, because we had a situation on another project quite a while ago that I know there was an issue with the, how they had to handle the grease trap and the removal of it from the property. So, that's why I'm curious as to whether that will be covered.
Right. It will be required to meet whatever the building and public works departments tell them that they have to provide. I mean, it's certainly available. If they need to add, you know, additional water line there, or extend a water line from elsewhere on, you know, within the property, I'm sure they can do it. Kevin can probably speak to that better than I can. But whatever the city requires, they will have to comply with.
Thank you.
Any other questions of city staff? All right, well, I presume you are the applicant. If you'd state your name for the record, we'd appreciate that.
Sure. My name's Kevin Thistle. I'm the architect here, representing the owners, who, Mr. Sanders, who are also here with us tonight. To answer your question with regards to sewer, yes, we are planning on installing a grease interceptor on this site to accommodate this facility and anything else that might need, be needed in the shopping center itself.
Do we have any other ques, or any questions for the applicant?
I have one. Chairman?
Mr. Lassop.
The parking that is there in front of the trailer shop, at 30 feet, that's near where that trash container is, do we anticipate any type of drive-through-like scenario, or?
No, we're not planning on a drive-through for this, no.
Thanks.
Any other questions for the applicant? Well, I think you're getting off easy. All right, I think we may have questions on the next, on the next project, certainly. Well, with that, thank you very much, and?
I'll be back.
Call you, indeed, thank you. This is a public, public meeting and a public, I'm gonna open the public comment period, I should say. And anyone wishing to be heard on this matter, please stand up, state your name. And if you would, please sign in.
Good evening. Doug Shetman. I'll break this down real quick, although I have a last name, and it takes longer than normal. I'm here in support of this project, in both of them, and I can address my public comment on both of them. Nevada Way is the gateway to our downtown area, as you well know. And I think you realize that both of these properties would be considered a blighted area. And I applaud the Saunders for taking the initiative to develop both of these properties. I think it'll do, go a long ways in beautifying that approach into our downtown area. Specifically, though, I own the property that the mortuary is in, Blair Plaza, right next door. And I would have no opposition to this at all. I do want to address one issue on the second portion of this agenda on the resolution, and that is the setback requirement. On Blair Plaza, if you've looked at that, that has the same setback.
I'm sorry, the setback is the next agenda item, and we're not on that agenda item. So, unfortunately, I don't believe it's appropriate to be?
I thought the chairman was addressing both of them at the same time.
It is for one property. Only, we are only, we're discussing the use permit and the variance only for 804 Nevada right now.
Okay, I'll be back for the second one.
My apologies, I thought, I think I indicated you could. All right, thank you. Any other comments on this particular agenda item relating to 803 Nevada Way?
804.
Oh, yes, 804. Seeing none, let's turn to the virtual audience. If anyone would like to be heard on this matter, please dial 702-589-9629. And again, we'll pause. Hearing no comment, hearing no phone calls, we'll close the public comment period of this agenda item, and bring it back to the planning commission for discussion. Do we have any comments and thoughts on this, on this item?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. One of the main considerations I have on this, while the parking is, four spots is probably not a serious problem, but is obviously a consideration. And even though I know we're not supposed, we're not considering the project across the way, the issue, though, that still does present itself is that the, any crossing of a street to go, whether it be to that project or something else, would present a potential safety issue. So, even though I know we're not considering the second project, the reality is you can't necessarily separate them when it comes to a safety issue or parking, to be honest with you. So, I have a, I have a big reservation on it because of that.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lassop.
Susan, back in 1949, what kind of parking requirements did we have when this property was built?
I can't speak to 1949. That was federal jurisdiction, period. I don't happen to know that very old code very well.
Is it safe to say that it might have just been non-existent?
No, there actually was a zoning ordinance adopted in 1960. That's rather brief. I just couldn't tell you what the motel versus retail versus dining parking requirements were at the time.
Gotcha. I think the commission needs to consider the fact that these people are trying to make a business operate in an old building. And if they don't have enough parking, the general consumer isn't gonna go there. I mean, they're only gonna walk a certain amount of distance to get to where they want to go. So, it only negatively affects the applicant if they don't have enough parking. So, I'm in favor of this.
Ms. Bonner?
I would have to agree. The potential of what this could do in terms of how it would change how that area looks, I think far outweighs the couple of parking spots, especially given what we heard from a surrounding neighbor that he's not opposed to folks parking there. That pretty much eliminated my reservations. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I tend to agree. I mean, clearly, this is a really neat project. I'm excited to see it go into play. I certainly wouldn't want to stop the project based on four parking spots. And I understand from our staff report that the requirement for two of those parking spots is related to the single table that's being proposed. So, I think that, I just don't see that being fully occupied all the time. So, I think maybe the parking will be generally adequate. That's my personal opinion. I am in favor of both the variance and the conditional use permit. Anyone else want to be heard? So, seeing none, and given that the conditional use permit is really kind of dependent on the parking variance?
There still should be two separate motions, if that's where you're going. One's for a resolution, and the other is for a variance.
Right, and I was just gonna reverse them and do the variance first.
But the variance, there wouldn't be outdoor dining if there weren't a food truck, so?
Thank you. I knew I could depend on you. All right, so we're gonna start with the conditional use permit matter. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and make that motion to approve resolution 1221, which includes finding and conditions for approval of CU-22-276.
And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further comments on this matter before we take it to a vote? All right. All in favor of conditional use permit?
Go ahead.
All in favor of, I'll just say that, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Conditional use permit passes. Let's move directly on then to the variance for parking.
Mr. Chairman, I move to conditionally approve V dash twenty-two dash six six one, subject to findings and condition contained on page three of the staff report.
I'll second.
Second from Ms. Bonner. Any additional comments before we bring this to a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes as well. Congratulations. So that brings us to agenda item number four for possible action. Kevin Thistle for Darren and Donna Saunders, and this relates to the property at eight twenty-five Nevada Way, which is also located in the general commercial or C two zone. And let's start with the staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For this property, which is across the street from the property you just discussed, the conditional use permit pertains to an application for up to two food vendor trailers on site. In this case, the site plan indicates one dedicated spot, and it sounds certain that they will definitely plan to have always one food trailer or truck on site, but they mentioned there's the possibility for a second one, and if that were to happen, it would occur in the area labeled as the maneuvering area for that truck, because there's not two dedicated food truck spaces shown on this particular site plan. For this request, the property consists of a small restaurant building, originally known as, I believe Frosty Freeze or Tasty Freeze, on the front half of the site. The rear of the site is, has basically been undeveloped, undeveloped over the years. The owners plan to remove the more recent additions to the building and return that building to its original size and use as a walk-up ice cream shop. In addition, for the rear of the property, they are proposing to bring in shipping containers that would then be modified for the purposes of food and bar service, and that would include outdoor ground-level dining area, upper-level dining area on top of some of those shipping containers, and then some of the shipping containers would be used for display purposes, and as the exhibits show, they're going for an automotive-related theme in terms of the display items. And as for the prior request for the food trucks, there could be various operators of those over time. This is not just an applicant for a particular, you know, snow cone shack asking for permission. It's similar to the one downtown at Two Wheels, where you, you're approving up to two trailers if that is your decision, and then that could be changed with various trailers or trucks over time. As for the prior report as well, the city doesn't have specific design or other standards related to food trucks, but the staff, excuse me, the resolution addresses that by saying that if there were ever regulations in the future, that could be retroactively applied to this as well, and that condition was also in the prior resolution that you approved. For this particular property, the variance request is a bit more extensive due to the new construction proposed. For the new buildings, they are proposing to put them at the rear of the site with a five-foot setback, whereas the code requires a rear setback of twenty feet based on the residential uses to the rear. To summarize that particular request, there would be no rear setback required if there were not residential zoning to the rear. However, the applicants have noted that the adjacent commercial properties on either side have zero-foot setbacks to the residential uses to the rear, so this request is, you know, in keeping with what is already existing in the area. The second aspect of the variance request is for a total of fourteen parking spaces, where the code would require thirty-five spaces. And as I mentioned for the prior report, that parking need is due to all of the, basically, this entire site will be used for dining purposes, whereas the one across the street was going to be mostly retail. And again, our code for dining-related uses bases the parking on customer seats. So as you see from the plans that they have, they are proposing seating both inside on one of the buildings, outside at ground level, and then also, I'm sorry, is this supposed to? And also above, above the deck. I'm sorry, which one did you do? Okay, just, okay, so these are some elevations. It's showing both the display areas inside some of the container units. And likewise, and unfortunately, I don't believe I can zoom on these plans, but the site plans that you have, as well as the floor plans, which I didn't include in this particular display, but the site plan indicates the outdoor seating. The floor plans indicate more of the indoor seating. And what I could have noted for both properties, actually, is that the applicant did try to place as much parking as possible on the site. There was an earlier attempt that could have gained more spaces, but unfortunately, due to the size and shape constrictions of the properties, it, those spaces couldn't be usable. They were not at the right angle with the right aisle width, so in order to make parking that would be fully usable, they had to lose a space or two in order to accommodate that. But the applicant was very responsive to those issues. And again, with regard to parking, the applicant makes the same argument as for the other property, that they believe that the request is necessary to be able to compete with the downtown businesses, which are not required to have parking on site. And again, the staff report notes that other parking variances along this particular stretch of Nevada Way have been approved in the past. The third aspect of the variance request relates to landscape reductions, and in particular, there are just two minor requests relative to that. For the C two zone, ten percent of the site is supposed to be in landscape, and in this case, there will be nine percent. And although the property is technically already developed, the code states that if you're doing a major renovation, where more than twenty-five percent of the valuation of the property is affected, you're required to comply with the current code. The second aspect of the variance is that the landscape buffer along the street is only five feet in width. That part is in the city right-of-way. The code requires ten feet, but again, due to the location of the existing building and the need to get as much parking on site as possible, they're proposing landscape elsewhere in terms of all the different planter areas, as opposed to a ten-foot buffer along the street, whether or not it's divided by a sidewalk. And for that request, the applicant indicates that what they are proposing is comparable to other properties on Nevada Way, and along that part of Nevada Way, given the historic nature of the area and that buildings were built over many decades, the landscaping in the area greatly varies. And providing more landscape area in this case would eliminate at least one parking space if they were to try to provide more landscaping towards the front of the property. So for the variance report, there are findings that can be used to either approve or deny the request. In this case, the motion for the conditional use permit for the food trailers is on page sixty-six. For the variance, it's on page seventy-seven. Now, relative to a comment I brought up for the first request, where the applicant here mentions that since this will have more of a parking demand, given the high, it's all going to be dining, restaurant uses, since there is one property owner between the two property, the same owner owns each project across the street from each other, they did bring up the possibility of possibly getting approval from the city to install a marked crosswalk across the properties, and so that will be examined by Public Works as this project moves forward. There'd be the possi- potential for possibly one of those flashing light signals that, you know, pedestrians could activate, as we have at some other crosswalks in town, so that oncoming traffic would be notified to stop for pedestrian crossing. It's too early at this stage to get in that, in that kind of detail, but certainly Public Works will work with the applicant with regard to that. I think that's all I have right now. There is, I'll bring up anything else, as I recall it.
Thank you very much, Susan.
Oh, I, I just remembered.
And Mar.
Okay. Unlike the prior request, in this case, the approval of the food trucks is not necessarily dependent on approval of all aspects of the variance. Because there are three aspects to the variance, one example would be if the planning commission decides that you're okay with the setback variance for the new buildings and the reduction in landscaping, but you're not wanting to grant as much of a parking variance, remember that the parking variance is related to the amount of customer seating, not the food trucks per se. So in theory, if the planning commission wanted to deny the parking variance, that would mean that the amount of outdoor seating would be limited to twenty-eight seats, based on the fourteen parking spaces that are provided, but it would not preclude two food trucks being on the property. So that's why the resolution for the food truck doesn't state that it is dependent on approval of the variance. And so unfortunately, your variance discussion may be a bit more complex, because there are three aspects that you don't necessarily need to approve, all or none of them.
Very good. Thank you for that additional clarification. I've got really a pretty simple question for Susan, so I'll kick this off. Regarding the back of the property, is there a requirement for a wall separating this property, I guess, from the, I think it's a utility right-of-way immediately behind it?
Actually, and the, the utility right-of-way is a bit to the west, behind the adjacent property, I believe. Well, actually, no, there is a, there's an alley that's used as a utility right-of-way to the west. In this case, to the immediate south, the utility easement is on the property to the south. But for the C two zone, when it abuts residential, yes, there's a requirement for a six-foot wall. In this case, there's a rather significant grade drop-off at the back of the property, and so permits have already been issued for the retaining wall that they're going to be building back there, and that retaining wall is more than six feet in height relative to the residential uses that are below and to the rear.
So if I understand, does, the six-foot requirement is not from grade level on this property, but from the property behind?
Well, it's technically required at the property line, but by the time the, the grade goes, I mean, the, the dining properties at this elevation, the most, you know, the apartment building behind is, what, a dozen feet lower? Okay, it's at least twelve feet lower, so, so there's going to be approximately twelve feet of retaining wall, and then the buildings, the back of the buildings themselves, I'm sorry, how the, yeah. Yes, that bottom elevation is the rear elevation of the buildings that will be next to the residential uses to the rear. So if somebody were to look out a window up the hill, then they would see those buildings.
Hmm, okay. Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Yes, and I'm, maybe it's just trying to make sure I understand the issue on the setback, but the way the containers look like to me on the plan at the back are at the back of the property, and that's where the five-foot, where they would be five feet from that rear property line, correct?
Correct.
And then one of the, then there would be a stacked container up above, of which that would be, I guess, fence, so to speak, or something protective guard rail, so, because there's supposed to be food perhaps, or bar up above?
Well, the upper dining level is on the larger part of the building to the north, so the blue depiction is all the new buildings. The skinny containers at the back of the site, that's all going to be basically automotive display and bathrooms and things like that. If you look at the big blue chunk north of that, I'm sorry, does this have a pointer? Okay, yes. Yes, thank you, Kevin.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
But the question still remains, from that upper level of that one area, is there not buildings or houses or apartment behind there on the rear adjacent property?
At least a dozen feet below, there's an apartment building. You basically, if you go out to the site now, you're looking at pretty much the roof of the apartment building to the rear of this property.
But once you get up on a second story, the view angle is going to change, correct?
Right, but if it matters at all, if you may be able to see from the aerial photo, it's not like the apartment, it doesn't appear to be any type of usable or recreational area behind that building. It looks like they've placed a really long shed.
But there are windows in that building, which of course could be looked into, I would think.
If you could speak up into the mic.
Ernie, I was there today, and at the current grade level, where they've already done some site work, I walked that, there's a, it's a step down, and I have questions about that later, but standing on the most upper level, you could only see, and there, you could see directly into one slider. I don't know what it's going to look like if you're looking on the roof, because there are, it's a long shed or storage area. You couldn't necessarily see between that roof and into it from the ground level. I don't know from up above, though.
But that's what I'm questioning, the up above, as to whether there's any kind of a-
It's really, really tight back there.
Yeah, I couldn't tell, but that, it is definitely, and, and I guess the second piece of the problem is noise that conceivably could be occurring on that second level.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that part?
I'm also, I was going to ask about noise level that could be from the open area of the bar food on that building.
I'll get to that point in a second, as will the applicant, but regard to your first point, one thing that may be helpful to keep in mind is that whether a property is owned commercial or residential, two-story buildings are allowed. So there are plenty of places in, in town where you have properties at equal grade, and yes, you might have a two-story home with windows, and a two-story office building with windows facing each other. The code only requires a six-foot wall at the property line, so it's not as if the code has an intent that a second level of a commercial project is not allowed to look at the second story of a house or seat to a window.
I don't disagree with you, but that's why my question originally was, was the upper area at the back part of the property only five feet from the back, okay, which does present a little different area issue. Not that it isn't permitted, but because we're considering a setback variance, it does have, it is germane to that decision.
Right, but if you look, there are, the bottom elevation is the rear elevation of those buildings. There, that, if it shows a person on top of there, that is the dining area to the north. There is, there will not be people on top of that, those portions of the building there, and plus, you can see there are no windows on the back of that building, either upper or lower level.
But the open area where there is going to be dining on the one side still is an open area.
That open area is where the seating is, is much, is thirty, forty feet from the rear property line?
Yeah, much further north. It's not on the property line. It's not a five-foot setback from that point, if you want.
Right, if you look at-
Again, I'm just going back. My original question was trying to understand that eating area- area on, above that first level as to how close it was to the property line. Now that I understand it's back, obviously that is a lesser issue. That's where I was looking for clarification. So I get that, thank you. But the only other concern that I still have of that, even though it is further back, you still have the potential for noise and lighting at night, which does, I would think, present an issue. I mean, this project is great, don't get me wrong, but I still have to look at the facts of how it could have influenced things, and that's kind of where I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, I'll let the applicant respond to the noise issue, we've already asked them about that.
And, okay, that answers my question.
Any additional questions for city staff before we turn our attentions to the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, a point of clarification over here.
Oh, sorry.
I, I think with the discussion regarding the second level, I would refer the planning commission to page 88 of your packet. I think that does a good job of showing the distance between the property line, the back wall, and where that outdoor area would be. Page 88 in your packet.
The second level floor plan, it's kind of hard to see the page numbers in the packet on those sheets.
Right, right.
Okay, that, you're right, that better shows it, thank you.
Thirty, yeah. All right, thank you very much. Any further questions for city staff? All right. Mr. Thistle, for the record, probably repeat your name and...
Kevin Thistle, architect here representing the owner. I just wanted to mention one further thing with regards to your concern on that vision from the, from one to the other. I don't know if we can get another graphic back up there.
She's going to put it up.
Second floor deck area that we're talking about with outdoor seating over here is 33 feet from here to the property line. But in addition to that, on the other elevation back here, we have the stacked conex unit on top of this, which is just a display for automotive type things. And in addition to that, so that would also screen in view from that direction.
Thank you. Would you like to make a general statement before we engage in questions?
I think Susan did a very good job of explaining, there's a lot of, I don't want to say complexities to this particular site, but yeah, it's a little bit complicated. But she did a very good job of just explaining all the issues and concerns that we had on this as we went through the design process. So I would be happy to answer any questions or expand upon anything that you might know.
All right. Ms. Bonner?
Thank you. In terms of the site work and where the conex ends, I noticed there's a dip down that's not filled in, it looks like there's the beginning of a wall. It was graded out a little bit, and then it comes down. What's the plan for that, in terms of the, is that part of the whole site and included, or is that part of the easement or the, the other property?
What we actually have to do on this is, right now, we've gone through the, basically, entitlement drawings or the preliminary design drawings. When it comes down to it, what we have to do is we have to have a topography for this particular site, which will give us the exact grades, and we can establish the finished floor elevations of the conex boxes, what the grade is to the back, what that retaining wall relationship to that is. So we don't have an answer to that right now, but we will have during the construction document phase.
Good enough, thank you.
Kind of going back to my original question for Susan, at the back of the property, apparently there is going to be a retaining wall, which will be from grade downward. Will there be a, kind of a visual screening wall going up six feet from grade?
Yes, there is. They're planning, not a masonry wall, because by the time you put in a six-foot retaining wall and put an eight-foot masonry fence on top of that, it is quite a feat engineering-wise to accomplish that. So what they're planning to do is put in a six-foot masonry retaining wall and then put a screened fence above that, on top of the wall, on top of the retaining wall.
My concern, and Commissioner Biaski has been kind of hitting at this as well, is noise, so I'll ask you to kind of elaborate on noise mitigation efforts, but, so noise and then safety, and again, of course, protecting the privacy of those below you, right? And so as far as safety, this, this green fence you're referring to, are we kind of talking like a chain link fence type thing? I mean, is it strong enough to support a person?
Yes, yeah, it's strong enough to, yeah. There's no possibility of anybody falling through it or over it or anything like that, it's a six-foot fence.
Okay.
So, yeah.
We've all seen those fences, they offer certainly some level of privacy. Is this going to be a unique fence that offers kind of more than, because they typically tend to have a little gap?
No, it's not just a, I don't believe it's just a chain link fence, it's, it also has slats in it that would provide additional screenage, so.
Oh, right, and that's what I was referring to, the slats, they still can kind of see through them to some degree. If you would, maybe talk to us a little bit about noise mitigation relative to our noise ordinance, things like that.
Yeah, Susan brought that up as we were talking to her about this application, and she informed us that there are noise restrictions in the ordinance, and the owner was made aware of that, and he is fully aware that he is going to make sure that the noise levels are in compliance with that ordinance. So no loud music, disturbing the neighborhood, complaints, anything like that. Well aware of it.
All right. Are there any, I guess, physical control mechanisms that are going to be employed?
Visual control mechanisms?
No, I'm, I said physical.
Physical.
Yeah, you know, we talk about a fence, a chain link fence, that really doesn't stop much noise.
Yeah, right. Actually, the conex boxes are along the entire wall, so that's going to, you know, buffer any low-level noise. So what we have to be really careful of is anything, any sound-type system that might be on the upper level, that would be a concern, and we'd want to make sure that that is handled very carefully. Also, obviously, that even the lower level, we want to make sure those levels are obviously in compliance. But yeah, the conex boxes themselves will provide a lot of, a lot of that screenage. But even so, the owner is, does not want to be a bad neighbor and does not want to have any nuisance calls on the property.
Very good. And I think I'd like to, while I'm, while I've got the microphone, I'd like to address, I think we have some concerns about parking.
Yes.
Clearly, this is, speaking for myself, I, frankly, I like the project a lot. I think it's a cool project. Obviously, we're here to help ensure that the community is not adversely affected by what is otherwise a very nice project. And so parking is a concern, even though Mr. Shapman may have spoken a little bit out of turn, again, my apologies for allowing that. Have you spoken with the neighbors about utilizing some of the private property adjacent for parking?
Can we talk about that?
Okay, okay. Yeah, I think, let's, let's just, let's hear all the answers.
Hello there, yeah, I'm Darren Saunders, and I've come up with the idea of these projects. Okay, yeah, basically, I have spoken with Mr. Shapman about doing a flow car park if Going back to sort of like the noise side of it, I'm more for a restaurant where you can actually sit and talk to each other rather than shout at each other because the music's so loud. So I'm planning on putting sort of surround sound music in, so everyone can hear the music, and it hasn't got to be blaring out. It'll literally be sort of coned in on the, the actual project. And the same with upstairs, up on the decking as well. So the, the actual roof project, the roof garden, doesn't actually come any higher than the motel next door. So even once that garden's set up, the containers are only nine foot high, and then you've got the roof garden sitting up on top of there. I think the property next door comes up to 18 feet high. So we should be well and truly, everyone should have their privacy, sitting up at sort of nine foot height, looking back down to the condos behind, I don't think you're even going to see them.
And I understand from Susan's staff report that you have approached the city about putting in a crosswalk, in essence, between your two sites, correct?
I, yes, I only spoke verbally about it so far because I wanted to see which way it was going to go this evening. Yeah, but that is something that I think would be sort of beneficial for the property.
Right, right. I'll stop there. Any other questions for the applicant?
Yeah, with respect to, going back to the noise for a moment, you said something about speakers, surround sound speakers. Now, are you envisioning those up in the air on that upper deck where there's food service?
Basically, they would be down on the, the lower area.
The courtyard area on the ground level.
Yeah, so on the ground.
So not on the upper level?
There, there would be speakers up there, basically just being up on the four corners, so that you could hear music up there. And then on the lower level, they would only be up to, like, on the roof level of the container, so you're only just...
When you say on the four corners, are they going to be on posts up in the air? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, so you would have to put, like, posts in the four corners and put them up there?
Yeah, basically, but that would still only come up 17 foot high.
But how are you going to mitigate the noise level that's going to be spread to other, to the adjacent areas? Because that's going to be, that's, you're going to hear it if this, if you've got speakers up there.
You're only going to hear it if it's turned right up. As I say, putting speakers, so they're actually pointing to the areas that's needed, would only bring the sound to that area.
Sound moves spirically, so it's going to, it's going to move around.
That is something that basically can be adjusted to, like whatever you prefer.
Mr. Chairman, it might help the planning commission to know that we have a far more detailed noise code than we used to. We used to have a noise code on the book for decades that frankly was incredibly vague and therefore really difficult to enforce. My understanding is the new noise ordinance that was adopted, what, maybe less than six months ago? Or within the last year, definitely, is far more detailed, and I believe that it has decibel levels that are listed. And that I believe the police department now has the appropriate decibel level equipment, so that if there are complaints, and obviously, the issue downtown where we have existing restaurants near residential areas, I don't know if they've had a chance to use that yet, but that is where we would typically have noise complaints in the past. So the city is better equipped with the code that we have now to be able to address noise complaints and actively be able to enforce that.
And just building on Susan's comments, the police department has been trained in the use of decibel meters and has responded to complaints and addressed it.
Okay, okay, well, that's good to know because that's important.
I am planning on this being sort of like, just background music, so people can actually sit down and talk to each other.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right. Well, thank you very much for your time and attention to our questions this evening.
Thank you.
If you have nothing else to add at this point, please feel free to sit down.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
All right. This is a public hearing, I'll open public comments at this time for this agenda item. Would anyone like to step up and be heard?
I'll try again, thank you very much for taking the time to do this. This pro, this...
For the record, if you just repeat your name.
Doug Shapman, thank you. This project is an exciting thing, I think, for me personally and for the city a little bit. You get into areas like historical preservation as an example, to try to restore that old frosty freeze building, so it gets into that aspect of things. The setback requirement, I don't see that that's an issue at all, based on the other buildings that are already in the proximity there, my building and the building on the opposite side of this property, all have, I think Susan said, a zero setback, that's been there for some time. Concerning the parking, Mr. Saunders and I have talked about that. There was an event there over the weekend, maybe somebody went there, it was a pumpkin patch thing that was over at the place across the street. Essentially, they had a gate there that there was essentially no parking on that property at all. And I drove by there a couple of different times, they were parking on this particular property, they were parking in my property over there at Blair Plaza, they were parking along the street, and the old, whatever that is, that, the other building there, so there is, they, they accommodated that. And I think a lot of the things that are going to transpire on this particular property are things that are going to be happening on weekends and evenings, where my lot is not used hardly at all for those types of purposes, so I wouldn't have any problem at all on those clients parking their vehicles in my property as well. So I hope that answers some of the issues. The noise thing with the, what he's proposing on the back and no windows on that, that creates a natural barrier itself once those are put in, so I agree with the noise ordinance that's in force right now, and it has a lot of teeth to it. So I would wholeheartedly vote to approve this resolution. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Shapman. Would anyone else like to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, let's bring it to the virtual audience. Please dial into 702-589-9629. Well, hearing no phone calls, let's close the public comment period on this, on this issue, and bring it back to the planning commission. We're going to start with item with B, conditional use permit 22-277, resolution 1222. Any thoughts on that matter? And this is for the outdoor sales, up to two food vendors.
Mr. Chairman, I don't see a reason why we couldn't approve this resolution, unless there's any other discussion.
Do we have some discussion, Mr. Biaski?
Is there any reason why we can't look at all three?
Yeah, because we need to approve the conditional use permit before we look at the variance.
Right, yeah, so we're, yeah, we're just going to hit this one, and then we'll go to the variance, which has all three of those items. You betcha.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve resolution 1222, which includes findings and conditions for approval of CU-22-277.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second. Any further comment on the part of the planning commission? Hearing none, let's bring it to the vote. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No opposition. All right. Conditional use permit has been approved. Let's move to the variance request. This is variance request 22-662. And these are variances to Title 11 and the city code, and there's three items here. This is a rear setback of five... And there's three items here, this is a rear setback of five feet. Whereas Section eleven et cetera requires a rear setback of twenty feet. Second item is a total of fourteen parking spaces are proposed, whereas Section eleven would require thirty-five based on the use. And Section three is reduction of landscape requirements. And as we heard, uh, there's ten percent requirement, the applicant is proposing a little bit over nine percent. Any comments and thoughts?
Yeah, I'd like to jump in, um, since I had a number of comments earlier. Um, if I look at each one of these, uh, taking them one at a time, I think relative to the rear setback. And um, I've had good answers or explaining my concerns relative to um, what I felt could be issues with view and noise. Um, so I frankly, from my standpoint, I don't see a problem in that particular variance. Um, as far as number three, landscaping, I also don't feel that that's an unnecessary variance to grant. But I do have, um, I do have a serious concern on parking. Um, that is quite a few spaces. We just also approved across the street, um, four more spaces that technically bring this number up. So, and we don't have off-street parking, so the only alternatives are finding additional parking in that area. Now, I heard what Doug, Mr. Sheppman said. And while that is a, that is a potential answer, um, there's no guarantee. I mean, you could sell that property two years from now, one year from now and lo and behold, we, we don't, that's, that's private property. Someone can come in and say, well, I'm gonna charge twenty bucks a parking spot or I'm, I'm not gonna allow it at all, I'll tell you. So there is a serious issue, we're trying to come up with parking. Now, I heard something that, and maybe staff will explain again, just make sure I understand it. But what I did hear was the potential for a crosswalk. Um, even though there is one not too far down the street, but that one's far enough down that I'm not sure people pay attention to that one. You almost, because of the two properties, would have to have it really right there, in my opinion. And I believe that, if I remember again, from the property that we just approved, there were fourteen spaces. So theoretically, we would cover a majority of the needed spaces. Now, now my question, I, I, if we could, can we make a condition of a motion? That it, that the city would have to put in a lighted flashing crosswalk? Because if we could do that, that would have a, I think, a significant consideration for, at least for me to consider.
So what you're asking has a couple of challenges. First, that's a policy and budgetary decision, saying mandating a crosswalk there. Secondly, um, it would have to be evaluated by our city engineer, make sure it meets traffic standards. Uh, there's other factors taken into consideration, including the separation between crosswalks. So certainly a condition could be provided, uh, that the city explore with the applicant the feasibility of placing a crosswalk there. That's certainly something that is doable, but you can't bind the city in putting that in and budgeting for it when it's not budgeted for.
But we, but if the condition was, the condition could still be put there, it's just what you're, okay, you're saying it wouldn't be binding. Um, could we take an alternate approach on that, using that non-binding language? But perhaps then bring it back in a year for reevaluation? Well, it's a variance, so it won't, you can't do that.
Yeah, it's not a conditional use. Certainly another thing that the planning commission can consider and is certainly subject to the discussion of the applicant. A commitment by the applicant that there would be a cross uh, parking agreement between the two properties, regardless of long-term ownership.
Uh, okay, so I'd be referring to the eight oh four property, the cross-street that the applicant does. So that could be, which obviously makes definitely a lot of sense. It's no different than the question posed to Doug Sheppman's property because same thing exists there. But we have no guarantee on that one at all.
But that's certainly a question for the applicant, whether they'd be willing to entertain that as a condition.
Okay, um, I think that is a valid question that I'd like to see asked and answered.
So can we, can you kind of instruct me as how I ask that of the applicant at this point? Can I ask the applicant to come forward and?
Ask the applicant to come forward and ask them if they would be receptive to that condition.
Very good. Come a minute to finish. Please.
Mr. Chairman, if I could help the issue a little.
Thank you.
If the applicant is in favor of it, a draft condition would be that the property owner shall record a cross-parking agreement for eight oh four and eight two five Nevada Way that will apply to future owners, as long as there is a dining-related business located at eight two five Nevada Way that requires more parking than required onsite.
Say that again on the property numbers.
Right. The property owner shall record a cross-parking agreement for eight oh four and eight two five Nevada Way that will apply to future owners, as long as there is a dining-related business at eight two five Nevada Way that requires more parking than provided onsite.
I want to make sure I understood the numbers.
Right, because for instance, if eight two five eventually got converted to something else that didn't require excess parking, there'd be no reason to force that cross-parking agreement with eight oh four in case eight oh four was ever sold to somebody else.
Could I ask something related to?
Uh, by all means.
I'm just curious if, um, before we get too deep into putting a condition on the approval of the variance, is the rest of the commission interested in that condition? Because if the majority are not and you put it in, it would be denied and we'd move forward. So if we could just maybe take the temperature of how everybody's feeling about that? Anybody, any comments?
I'm not in favor of it, I think, uh, I think the parking, we're aggressive in our parking for restaurants. I think we have a lot of, you know, we, we go a little bit overboard. Look at Fox, for instance, look how much seating they have inside. People work it out, and if you can't find a parking spot, you're not gonna go in there and buy food. So I think, you know, it weeds itself out, I think there's gonna be a lot of foot traffic there. There's gonna be people coming from the motel next door, there's gonna be people walking down from Jack's. I mean, there, a lot of it's gonna be walk-up. I, I don't think that putting a stipulation on a future sale to, to do something on a property adjacent to it. I think that, you know, that kind of muddies the water on title. So, you know, I'm, I'm opposed to it.
And Mr. Chairman, we approved a variance for Southwest Diner for six spaces instead of thirty-one. We approved that variance for Fox's that Commissioner Rudd was talking about, twelve spaces instead of sixty-six. I mean, we've done worse. And as I said in my last, as I said in my, in the last agenda item, it's only gonna negatively affect the applicant if they can't get customers to their business. People aren't gonna walk a mile. Or they aren't gonna drive into Boulder City, park somewhere and then walk a mile specifically to here. Or at least it's unlikely. They'll find parking.
Understood.
I tend to try to look at the facts, not supposition of what might happen, so.
I just live in the real world, Ernie.
All right, let's move beyond that. Um, Mr. DeTeresa, do you have any comment on the parking?
I just wanted to say that I agree with the, the last few statements. I think, um, putting a condition on this would be putting the cart before the horse. Let's uh, see if a crosswalk is needed and also if a parking becomes an issue. I think in that neighborhood, it probably won't.
Thank you. Well, I, I tend to share Commissioner Biaski's concerns, looking at, you know, kind of holistically looking at the parking issues in, in this community and in particular, this neighborhood. I think the side streets adjacent, you know, moving away from Nevada Way are, in a couple of cases, substandard. So it limits parking in that regard. However, I recognize, of course, as Chairman or Commissioner Rudd and Nassoff have indicated, you know, realistically, bad parking is gonna affect you, uh, the applicant. But I do also have concerns about residents in that adjacent area. You know, they, they have an expectation that their parking won't be completely flooded with these many variances that we've provided. And so I think really my message would be more to city and hopefully city council. And I'd like to see us as a community address parking in this part of town. I've had the good fortune to do some traveling in the UK, for instance. And every small community has pay to park. It's a nominal, a nominal fee, um, people seem to pay it. Well, I grumble a little because I'm from America, but you know, the point is, they make parking available. Um, you know, you look at, for instance, the old seven eleven building. If that were to come up for sale, what a nice parking spot that would be, you know? And for a nominal fee, we eliminate so many issues, uh, make neighbors happy and all that. The point of all this is, and I guess I'm directing this to city staff, is I think as a community, among the many other things you all are working on, it's something that I think we just need to look into and seriously consider. Because quite frankly, uh, we have projects on the book, uh, such as this one, that are being proposed that have a tremendous amount of merit, um, great projects. And I don't wanna see even potential buyers say, no, I don't wanna buy in Boulder City because my business won't, there won't be any parking. You know, anyway, so lest I ramble too much further. Pardon me? You gotta grumble more.
I'm good, I didn't have a clear throat, sorry.
So anyway, the point of all that rambling is, um, I think it's a, a community issue that we need to resolve. I don't think this applicant should be held up on, on what are our issues as a community. And it sounds like this applicant, by considering moving forward to the crosswalk between his two properties and with his outreach to um, adjacent landowner that does have a considerable parking area. I think he's doing his due diligence and, um, and we appreciate that. We appreciate the two of you working together to kind of resolve this and allow this project to go forward. Anyway, my apologies for rambling. I think, let's bring it back to the commission. So I think we've taken the temperature and it sounds like there really isn't enough membership here in favor.
Mr. Chairman?
Where?
Oh, okay, sorry.
I'd like to make a motion.
I'd like to just say one more thing, even though I understand, um, my colleagues also, um, what they've said. The fact, though, the two things that I've talked about that could be done are not really, um, a big thing. I, number one, for the owner of both properties right now to put some kind of a caveat on the deed or whatever, really has no effect even on someone downstream. Because it's going to be, as Susan said, it's limited to the whole issue of parking in the eight twenty-five property. The other one, um, is, um, that's just, uh, saying, hey, we'd like to see that the city definitely pursue it. It doesn't, that there's no guarantee because we can't make it a stipulation. So my only point is, those conditions, I don't see as being a, a real holdback. But I, I tell you that, it, it has a definite effect on my vote, even though it might not matter.
All right, thank you. Right, thank you. I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion, my own self. But after I make that motion, I think there'll be some, some discussion. I'd like to make a motion to approve V dash twenty-two six six two. And I think, um, move to conditionally approve V twenty-two dash six six two, subject to the findings and conditions contained on page four of the staff report. But I would like to add a condition. And that would be that the applicant work with city staff on procuring a crosswalk if possible. And that is my motion.
But what about the parking at eight oh four?
I don't think that'll fly. Do we have a second?
Staff just explained to us, though, that that's, you know, yes.
We need, we need a second.
Or any discussion? A second.
Thank you. Um, yeah, all we're saying, all I'm saying is make an effort. It, the answer may be resounding no, we can't put a crosswalk, but that's it.
I would second if there was no, nothing part of it, I don't, I don't think that, what's that?
As a point of order, a second is only so you can continue discussion. The person who seconds a motion isn't obligated to vote in favor of the motion.
If there is no second, does the motion die?
Yes.
Thank you, so if no one seconds, we can move on.
Well, we did have a second.
No, we did have a second.
We have a second.
Well, I, I mean, I, I guess what the discussion is, is I, I don't wanna second this with any kind of stipulation on the, on the, you know, for his motion. I would, I would like clean, we're, yeah, I guess we need to vote.
You would vote, and if the motion fails, then somebody else could offer a new motion.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you for that last clarification. All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Nay.
Were we voting on the whole thing?
Nay. We are voting on.
Vote, I'll restate the motion.
Thing.
He moved to approve V dash two two dash six six two, based on staff findings and conditions. And also including an additional condition that the applicant work with city staff to procure a crosswalk if possible.
And I think for clarification for the planning commission, this is for all of the variances.
That is correct.
Yes.
So in favor of all the variances with the additional stipulation only that they look into the feasibility of a crosswalk. That's all it is. It's not saying you have to have a crosswalk or anything like that. So have we had a vote? I asked for a vote, I've had a couple of people answer, but I don't think everyone here has expressed a vote. Ah, thank you very much. Those opposed, so indicate.
Nay.
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 Okay, the motion fails. Now, we can go to a second motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
Please do.
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number one two two two.
No.
Do I have it right?
You've already approved.
Second one, sorry, on the wrong page.
Page seventy-seven.
Page seventy-seven.
Sorry. I'd like to make a motion to approve a variance twenty-two six six two, subject to the findings and conditions contained on page four of the staff report.
I'll second that.
I'll second that. All right, so we have a motion and a second. This is a clean motion, just exactly as written.
Correct.
Just so there's no confusion. All right. Let's, let's take it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Very good, the motion passes. Or the variance passes. All right. All right, that brings us to item number five. This is for possible action. City of Boulder City is the applicant future fire station site 201 Nevada Way. And this is matters pertaining to modifying the master plan and zoning maps for a proposed future fire station. And this begins with a neighborhood meeting.
Good evening, Chairman Matuska, members of the planning commission. So I'd like to start with an overview of what you're considering tonight, then talk about the project summary, and then briefly summarize the proposed change to the master plan and proposed rezoning for this two acre site. And as you noted, the first aspect of consideration tonight is the neighborhood meeting. This is required by NRS. And so my presentation constitutes satisfying the requirements of the neighborhood meeting. Then you will hold the public hearing and allow the public to provide input on this consideration. Then you will consider resolution 1223, which would amend the master plan for this project. And then you will consider resolution 1224, which would consider rezoning for the project. So the project summary. Holly, if we can go back? All right.
How many are there?
The site plan was a part of the presentation, but I will refer to it in your packet. So, the fire department in Boulder City currently has one fire station. This is located on the west side of town. As the fire department has been evaluating how to improve delivery of services to the residents and businesses of Boulder City, one of the things that's been identified is the challenge in quickly responding to emergency needs on the east side of the community. As a result of that, they've determined that a second substation on the east side of the community, serving predominantly the east side residences as well as the Hemingway Valley, would be helpful in improving the response time for that part of the community. In that process, they try to identify city-owned land on the east side of the community that would meet that criteria. And as a result of considerations of utility locations, access, site conditions, the two acres at the southeast corner of Courtside and Nevada Way has been identified as the site for the proposed fire station. This fire station, and you can see in your packet, includes the floor plan. Would be approximately 3,000 square foot building with an adjoining 1,200 square foot bay area for the vehicles. In terms of character, it's going to look very much like a single-family home of the approximate same size from that area. It would have access on to both Nevada Way and Courtside. For the proposed substation to move forward, it requires an amendment to the master plan. And so, as you can see on the screen, for the area identified, currently, the master plan designates this area as open lands. And in order to allow for the fire department substation, it would need to be re-designated for public use. And so, as you can see with the exhibit on the screen, on the top, as we always do with these presentations, we show the current master plan land use designation, and then down below, the proposed. So again, it would be re-designated for public quasi-public uses. In addition to that, it would require rezoning. It is currently zone study area. We've talked about study area in the past. Study area is utilized as kind of a placeholder in our zoning ordinance, until a community has had an opportunity to further evaluate appropriate uses for that area, it is zone study area. Study area does not allow for permanent structures. And so that's the need for appropriate rezoning. And per the staff recommendation, we were proposing rezoning to GM, which is our government municipal zone. So in your packet, you have on page 105, in the red box, two requested actions that staff is seeking direction from the planning commission on. As you can see, the first, and this would need to be the first considered, is again, resolution 1223, which would amend the master plan land use designation for this two acre parcel. And then, resolution 1224, which would approve the rezoning to government GM zoning. And then with that, I can answer any questions. And I also do have Deputy Chief Chester here to answer any operational questions regarding the substation.
Mr. Biaski? Yeah, I have one question, unfortunately, to get a chance to ask you prior to this. But in that, if you had that second chart, the zoning one that was up there, and it showed it going to GM from study, why is it that the property across the way says R115 when the prior exhibit had it as still OL or whatever it was? I don't understand how that all of a sudden finds its way into this rezoning.
So the difference between the two, and if we can go back to the exhibit?
Yeah, I'm trying to understand that.
So what you're referring to is this first exhibit. This is the master plan land use designations.
Correct.
Yes. The land use designation is open lands for that area, but the zoning is R115. It's an instance in the past where it was rezoned, and I don't know the entire history with that property, but the master plan still shows open land designation. That area is not developed. That area is city-owned land. And so certainly in the future, before the city could consider any proposed development of that, besides the fact that it would need to go to the voters for approval for the sale of that land, it would also have to reconsider the master plan land use designation.
But you're saying that that R115 is already on the books as being under the master, under the
Zoning.
Under the zoning, land use plan, or is it the zoning?
The zoning.
Is, okay.
Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Michael, the, I was disappointed that we didn't have any data statistics as far as what areas of town would be best served. I mean, we're going to have a two, three-minute drive down the way, and we don't know how many calls that are in that area versus other areas. How do we know that this is the best site that's going to be best served for all of Boulder City?
And that's where I'd like to bring up Deputy Chief Chester to talk about the analysis the fire department has done with respect to that.
Very good.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioner. Greg Chester, Deputy Fire Chief. So, going back to, when we did the risk assessment, and two years ago, over the last two years during COVID, you know, it was compiling all the data, looking at the GIS. We did a GIS study with the response times on the roads and so forth. And we continue to do those studies today. When Chief Gray presented to the council our risk assessment, and if you guys recall, the map that showed, we actually need two. We're still short. We're just, you know, the areas in Del Prado isn't covered under our current fire station.
And I live there.
And then the area, and then the area on the other side, Hemingway, Lakeview, and Temple Rock and those areas over there are not covered. Right now, we are running, and this is the last three years, I do all the data. He does all the talking, I just do all the data. Over the last three years, we're running right now about 8:30 is what it takes us to get over the hill to calls over in that area, into Lakeview, Lake Mountain, or not Lake Mountain, but Temple Rock and those areas.
You mean from time of the call to the time of arrival?
Time of the call. There was a reference earlier about a three-minute drive. Let me go back a second. National standards says 6:15. 6:15 gives you, from the time the 911 caller calls to the dispatcher, to the time that the first arriving unit can get there, who can do something. Meaning, if I get there in five minutes, I can't do anything. I don't have water in my truck, I don't have medical in my truck. I can just tell people where to go. That's for the EMS and the fire truck, the fire apparatus. So, so that's from the time from the call to the time that they arrive on scene. And it's broken down in between that 6:15. So basically, on the 911 call is 15 seconds from the time the phone rings at dispatch. They have 15 seconds to pick it up. From that time, they have one minute to take all the information. And then after that, they hit the dispatch to dispatch the units. We have 60 seconds, whether it's 3 o'clock in the morning or 1 o'clock in the afternoon, those guys have 60 seconds to figure out where the call is, to get on the truck, and to respond. National standards is four minutes and 15 seconds to travel. And that's our total. You put all that together, it's total 6:15. We're running 8:30 over there right now. In Del Prado, we're running about 7:50. We're trying other avenues. There certainly, when, when I first got here two and a half years ago, we did our initial pool of data, that was 10 minutes to get over the hill. 10 minutes. In that time, over the last three years, we've reduced dispatch time by over a minute. We've got our turnout times down to roughly a minute 20. So we're still finding different ways to improve the services to do that. The second station, what this one will do, and originally when we, when we presented the rest, the study and the risk analysis and the risk assessment, we needed two more to cover, to cover all the entire populated area within Boulder City. To cover Del Prado, and then to cover over the hill. Looking at what was going to be the best option to cover, who do we choose? Doing it over there in that location would take care of roughly 1,978 homes and 4,400 residents. Not, that's estimated on a two-point, whatever that 2.53 persons per household is. So that was over there, a little bit less over here. So, you know, you're weighing options. Call volume wise, over the last three years, we're running about 7,500 calls total. Of those, about 1,100 occurred over there. A majority of those are EMS calls. And then going back to this time standard, you know, our time standard is set on two things, cardiac arrest and a fire. And a cardiac arrest, once you hit the floor or start having those symptoms, four to five minutes. So even with the national standard, oh, sorry, that's, you know, we're still pushing even with the national standard. For a structured fire, you're looking at six minutes before a room flashes. And we have all, we've lost control of that once it, you know? So the closer we are throughout the city, and the quicker we can get there, the quicker we can intervene in the process.
And I realize the question I'm asking is probably more budgetary than anything, but with a second fire station, are we going to get a third crew that we can actually start, stop a fire?
Right now, what we're doing is, is we're taking our existing crew, because we run seven people per day. We have two rescues, and we have three people on the engine. So I have seven, sometimes eight, when I have a reserve firefighter there. So the plan is, is to maintain the engine and a rescue at our current station one, at 121. And then at the fire station 122, we would have our second engine and that rescue and three people. So we would drop down to four over here and three over there.
Gotcha. So at least people that are having a heart attack, they'll probably live.
We're still needing, yeah, what our intent is, is the fires, even with what we have today staffing, and I'm sure everybody's heard this. Yeah, we, we, we don't have, we're waiting 12 more minutes to get that full required 15 personnel. On the EMS side, which is 80% of our call volume here, we have the capabilities to do that.
Understood. Thank you.
Could you repeat the numbers? I think you gave numbers, population and number of calls that you made in the Del Prado area. What about over the hill? I'm not sure I caught that.
Sorry, that was, Del Prado, the numbers are a little bit less. And the call volume is a little bit less.
So it was more over the hill?
We, the higher, the higher numbers, as far as reaching the residents, reaching the number of houses and the number of calls, roughly about 20% of our call volume occurs over there in that area.
Okay. Okay.
And where, and the siding, sorry, the siding of that station of where, you know, we put it there, it also allows those guys, our largest call volume is what we call Old Town. And a lot of those calls are up, going up over the hill, at the top of the hill. That's still out of the area. So that, it's not only going that way, it's coming back over this way as well.
I thought I read something also that said there was a second site being considered. Was that not true? Seriously?
No, the fire department, in working with Public Works, was looking for the ideal location for this. Looking at first, making sure it's located on the east side of the community, then looking at existing city land and determining feasibility to place it. There was other sites along Nevada Way that were looked at, but because of topography, because of drainage, because it would require bringing in significant fill, they were determined to not be feasible. And also, at the dais for you is the drainage report from our city engineer regarding this site. So this is the site that was determined to be the most feasible to locate the substation.
Was this the fire department's first choice?
The fire department's priority is having a substation in this area. In terms of exactly where, that was less of a concern. More of a concern is would it be feasible to build it there and what other obstacles? So from that standpoint, this is the best site for the fire department, and that's what they support.
Did you get your question answered? I've got one.
Go ahead.
I mean, I hate to kind of go down a tangent, but, you know, I think to myself about, what about kind of across the street, down the hill, at the old Nevada Welcome Center site? I mean, it's a little more developed already. Had that been considered?
That could not be considered because it's not owned by the city. That is actually owned by the state.
Thank you. Any additional questions right now? If I could address.
I do have to ask a question, though. Any reason why has the state actually been contacted? Because I know the state can make exceptions on areas of land. They did it for us in Lake Mead view states. Because I know the state can make exceptions on areas of land. They did it for us in Lakeview Estates.
Um, majority of that land is leased by the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, that is gonna be where the Welcome Adventure Center is going to be. And so there isn't any site that would be available.
I think I have questions for, um, Mr. Chesser. So we've talked a little bit about Hemon Way, um, Hemon Way Valley as being the, the optimum and the area that it's, um, that apparently has the longest, um, response times. But what about the area down, um, I'm not sure what we even call it, kind of the golf course, homes on the very south end near the airport?
That's, that's all covered. Our, that, those response times, because our station is right there off of Elm Street, um, those are all within three, four minutes. Um, even the, you know, the Boulder City Parkway, the industrial side, those are all within the response. All the way to, uh, which one is, Lake Mountain and then Lakeview, or is it the other way around? Lake Mountain. Lake Mountain, yes. So all the way to Lake Mountain, um, those times are kind of stretched a little bit right there. Um, but even then, um, that's where we have the last structure fire. And that one would have, we, there, there might have been a little bit more to that if we'd had another, another station over there in that area.
Okay.
That, that station will make it quicker to all of that, all of that area.
I see. Um, so it'll also make it quicker. I'm thinking also then of the, kind of the, I'll, I'll say southeast side. I'm thinking along that, like, Wyoming Street corridor, all the way down out to the desert.
Yes, sir.
What are, what are current response times out there? I, I happen to live on Wyoming Street and was, lived pretty close to that recent fire across from Baptist Church. What kind of response times in that neighborhood?
That's outside the area as well.
Ah, okay.
That's in the, you know, we, we, when we did our fourteen zones, um, that we broke into the city, and then I can evaluate everything that way. That one's kind of in the Del Prado area of that whole area up in there.
I see.
Um, so those, those are about seven minutes.
I see. Um, you'd mentioned that roughly twenty percent of your calls are for what I'm calling the Hemon Way Valley
Yes.
area. That seems like a fairly small number as a percentage relative to the rest of the community.
Well, I would, I would add, you can add another, probably twenty percent of that coming back up this way that we would cover, that we, we, we would meet the response times that way. I don't have those total data. Oh, like I said, the, our Old Town area is our most. Um, that's, that's in a high.
Gotcha.
And, and a couple thousand. Um, so that would allow, and a lot of times we have multiple calls that occur in this area that were, you know, going to both, so.
I see.
That, that just gives us, it brings it a little closer this way as well, as far as those, you know. I would, I don't wanna live on six fifteen and six thirty. I wanna live in, I wanna be in your house in four, in four minutes. Um, and that's what we're, that's what we're shooting for.
And I would like you to be there. Thank you. Um, thank you. Um, any other questions for staff? So I, I guess that concludes the neighborhood meeting?
Yes, you can move on to the public hearing.
And, okay, very good. Um, this is a public hearing. So I'd like to open, open, um, public comments. Anyone who'd like to be, uh, heard on this matter, please step forward, state your name and sign the, uh, form. Do they need to sign if they're repeat? Okay.
Yes, my name is Terry Mann. And as I stated before, I live in Tuscany Retreat, which is the residential area that borders right there at Quartzsite and Nevada. And of course, as we talked about zoning just a few minutes ago, that is residential zoned. And as Koki said, Koki Booth, who was here earlier and she left, that there are many other opportunities where this fire station could be on this side of the hill. I certainly understand response time. I understand public safety. I understand that there is funds that need to be used. But where are these funds gonna be utilized? That is the most important thing. And is tourism, as we talked about, the possibility of the, what they're planning on doing right there at, um, but I don't even know exactly what they're planning on doing. We just got something in the mail about that, and it was in the paper. So there seems to be a lot of things that are not really coming out and that the public are knowing. Just like the sign, the sign's down. Nobody even knows that there is a hearing today right now. Other than the, uh, there was a letter that went out, which I received, and of course, that's why I'm here. So I just want to make sure that my opposition, um, goes on record and that other sites need to be considered, not just one site. And I certainly understand the topography, um, and I certainly understand that there are costs that are involved. And of course, you're looking at spending the least amount of the city's money as possible. But you have to take into consideration who is living there. I mean, having a fire station smack dab in a residential area, I mean, where, where, where's your quiet enjoyment? I mean, you're talking about a lot of noise. You're talking about environmental impact. I mean, you're talking a lot of different things that need to be taken into consideration. So I would please like to be heard on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard on this matter? Yes, sir. Please step up and state your name.
Hi, I'm Mike Pontius again. Um, I heard what the chief said about response time from when you get the phone call. But if you just drive between whenever those doors roll up and whatever unit they're gonna roll, I guarantee you, there's, those stations are three minutes apart or three and a half minutes apart. And if your number one customer, uh, for your EMTs is Lakeview and, and those areas down there, we're talking about a two minutes or two and a half minutes difference in time. So I don't think the impact that it's gonna have, if you can envision coming out of Tuscany Retreat, and you can see it uh, on your map up there, Renaissance is the main street, the only exit we have. Anytime there's a fire, it's essentially they're gonna have to, if they exit on Quartzsite, essentially close that street when, when a big rig comes across there. The same thing's gonna happen on Nevada Way in that turn lane. If somebody's coming down that turn lane, you, somehow you're gonna have to put some kind of warning signal on Nevada Way and on Quartzsite just to keep the traffic from having some kind of mishap. So I think the significance of that small change in, in response time compared to what it's gonna do to the residents of Tuscany and the future residents across the street where it is zoned R fifteen. I mean, if you look at the original site where Tuscany is now, it's a series of walls, not a very buildable site. Randy Sham went in and did what he needed to do to make it. That same thing is gonna happen across the street over where it's R fifteen. And eventually probably even on the hill around the fire station. I mean, those are prime view lots if you wanna spend the money for infrastructure. So I think there's a lot of negatives to this particular site. Down the street, across the street, almost from Lakeview, there is city property down there. There's a huge parking lot for the ball fields. So I think there's other opportunities, uh, even up the hill farther, but it just seems like the impact and the cost of this particular proposal is, is not in keeping with doing the right thing here. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, let's move to the virtual audience. Please dial in to seven zero two five eight nine nine six two nine. Operators are standing by. Hearing none, let's bring the, uh, public comment to a close and move this back to the planning commission for your thoughts and possible motion. Uh, Mr. De Teresa, please.
Um, yeah, I, I get the impression that, um, the, uh, the city, um, went through a lot of thought and consideration to, uh, determine that this site would be the best. And to reduce response time in that area, it does make a lot of sense. I'm a big fan of our fire department. I don't think they would, um, they would choose this site willy-nilly. Um, and it makes a lot of sense to me, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote in favor of both of these.
Very good. Any other thoughts, comments on the part of the group?
I'll put a couple two cents in. First of all, it's, uh, absolutely, uh, in my opinion, necessary. I happen to have been on the receiving end of one of those calls years ago, and I can guarantee you it was not prompt. However, um, and, and the fact, if I even looked at the numbers, which in my simplistic estimation, you'd probably have about four per day calls out of that station.
Out of our current?
No, the one down, the new one. If you were to push, let's just say if you looked at that over the hill being focused on mostly.
I would say for, it, that would be hard to tell, because it's going to change our dynamics as far as response dynamics. What I consider right now, and, and I said earlier, right now, within the city proper, um, we have urban one and urban two, is how I, I do the, so that's gonna change a little bit, um, where I can bring, cause you know, the, within the times between these two stations, they're gonna start doing like this. So we're gonna be able to, you know, kind of twist that a little bit to make the best response area within the two stations.
Well, I, I was just running what I call numbers out. Your total of, I think you said seventy-five hundred for the year?
Yes, no.
And all I did is took-
That's for three years.
And if I took twenty percent, oh, for three years.
Yeah.
So if I took twenty percent, which is over the hill, that's so many a day, and even if I took proximities, doesn't add up to a lot. But if you're saying is that's over three years, that's even a third of that.
Twenty-six hundred a year is our average call line.
Okay. And if twenty percent of that's over the hill, the actual, I, I, I'm not questioning the need. I'm just saying that the amount of fire trucks going out during the day and making a noise are probably pretty, not that many.
Not only that, I mean, and, and to go back to your original question, we average about eight calls a day.
Okay.
Out of the station now. Um, so you can almost assure that probably three to four of those calls are gonna occur, occur over there.
Right. So that's my rough estimate.
In addition, as far as the sirens, the only time that we run sirens is when we encounter traffic. We just don't come out of the station and turn the sirens on. If it's at three o'clock in the morning and we're going into a neighborhood, those sirens aren't running. That's what the big blaring, blind you lights are for. Um, so that would not be an issue as well.
That's good to know. Thank you.
That makes a difference.
I'm prepared to make a motion, and I would recommend approval of Resolution, uh, twelve twenty-three, uh, which includes, uh, findings for a recommendation in favor of MPA twenty-two oh forty-six.
We have motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have motion and a second. Let's bring this to the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So note? No opposition.
That was just the motion for the master plan.
That is correct. Um, and now we'll move to the zoning, zoning change.
I, I'll similarly, uh, recommend approval of Resolution twelve twenty-four. Includes findings from recommendations in favor of AM twenty-two three sixty.
I'll second that motion. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. With that, that brings us to the final item of the day. And that is monthly, uh, progress report on development allotments.
No comment.
No comment. With that, we go to a final public comment period. Anyone wishing to be heard on anything that, uh, was addressed today? Wait a minute. Yeah. Any public comment?
Chairman Matuska, I'd like, I would like to make a public comment.
Okay.
As you well know, this is your last, uh, planning commission meeting. Uh, Chairman Matuska has, uh, met the maximum term limit to be on the planning commission. In fact, uh, has been on the planning commission since two thousand and six. And so we just wanted to recognize your service to the community. As I've mentioned, uh, to this commission and to the council and the committee members in our community, you have your own jobs and full lives, and yet you choose to take on this role and serve the community. And so I have the greatest respect for your level of service, um, to the community, and we just wanna thank you and congratulate you. You have, uh, cupcakes and a gift basket at the dais. I also have a card from the city manager and a coin from the city that you want. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here, but he wanted me to give this to you.
Well, thank you very much. And thank him very much. How neat. Wow.
So congratulations and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Well, thank you, everybody, and I really appreciate, you know me, I wouldn't, you, yeah. I've got a microphone, I'm gonna talk for a second. But all, all I can really say is, hey, it's been a lot of fun. Um, as they say, it's been real, it's been fun. Maybe not real fun, but it's been, you knew I was gonna go there, right? Anyway, but seriously, folks, um, man, it has been a real pleasure to work with city staff. You guys just really impressed me. You know, we've got a lot of work to do in this community, as we all know. Um, and I really appreciate everything that you guys do all day, every day. And commissioners, thank you for allowing me to chair these meetings these last year and a half. And, um, you know, you're, you're done with me now, so you don't have to worry about my stumbling about. Anyway, I just wanna say thank you. It's been, it's been fun, and I've enjoyed it, and we'll, uh, see y'all down the road. Probably standing at that dais, glaring at you. Anyway, um, I think I'm going to.
Chairman, we have to open the public comment to the virtual community.
Seeing no, no public, other additional comments, uh, during this public comment period, we open it up to the, uh, the virtual audience. Um, please dial seven zero two five eight nine nine six two nine. And we'll wait for a moment for the delay. I'm gonna just go out on a limb here and assume we're not gonna have any comments, so I'll close the final public comment period and close this meeting. Thank you all.